This time we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Present.
Here.
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 Present.
I think you all, members of the board, are present. Okay, we do have the agenda that has been published and there's some copies out there on the desk. It's also available on our website. Is there any modifications or changes to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion at the Board of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved as presented. Approval of the minutes from our regular scheduled meeting held on December 14th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. Clerk has prepared those minutes. Any questions, concerns, or modifications from the Board of these minutes? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented by the clerk?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk. Okay, we do have our public hearing tonight in regards to ordinance number O-0623 to amend Chapter 4 of the alcoholic beverage for the code of Walker County. Is anyone here tonight that would like to speak in regards to this ordinance change? Anyone like to speak in regarding this? There'd be the time for you to speak just regarding the ordinance. Okay, hearing none, we'll move down on our agenda. Next item we have is for public comment. Anyone that would like to come forward that would like to speak? We ask you to please come to the podium, state your name for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to speak. Who would like to be first? Yes, sir, come on up, please.
I'm a jump hoop, and I've had to miss a lot of meetings due to some health problems. But the last time I was here, I was talking to Robert Stoltz about this, what was the benefit that we got from bringing the lawyer all the way from Forsyth County over here? That was the night he was talking about possibility of replacing Shannon's duties with a county manager. Can you, I've talked with you before on this, but is there any possible way you can condense that answer down to a short, clear statement as what benefit did the Walker County taxpayers skip from bringing them over? And that cost the county over $1,600 when you did this. Can you make it short and clear?
Kind of like we've talked before, Mr. Jim. You know, Mr. Gerard's firm has been a valuable service to Walker County. His firm has dealt with many situations such as giving us advice on the Coats of America building, okay? He is giving us some advice with regard to personnel matters. And the great thing about using the Ken Gerard firm is, is that unless we retain his services, it doesn't cost the county anything. We don't pay a monthly retainer to use his services. And sort of like I've mentioned before, you know, the Gerard firm is a specialist in county government. We have a wonderful county attorney, but sometimes we need to seek the services of a specialist if we have a question or concern, simply because, number one, we live in a litigious environment in this country, that's just a known fact. With regard to being good stewards of the tax dollar, that is something that I think each and every one of us is very mindful of, okay? And I'm going to give you an example of something, okay? As district commissioners, we receive no compensation for driving to look at ditches or driving to look at problematic areas in our county. I don't know of one guy up here who has received a dime of compensation for driving in the county with regard to mileage or wear and tear on a vehicle. So I feel as though this board are very good stewards of the tax dollar. And I don't think we have used the Gerard firm in a reckless or, or just not in a good way. When we've consulted them, we've done it to make things better in the county, to look at ways of making things better, to make it, look at things more efficiently. And I feel as though that he has given us that advice in a very cost-effective way.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else like to speak tonight? Okay, please state your name.
Hi, I'm Bailey Clements. I'm the manager of Animal Control. Emily Sadler, she's the manager of the shelter.
And I'm Angie Teames, the director of the HR Department of Walker County Employees.
We are here to address some needs that we have already kind of brought forward through email and phone calls that we need addressed for both the shelter and animal control. For animal control primarily being a phone line as well as two computers that we're still lacking in our trailer. The phone line is imperative, it's by far biggest complaint by the citizens. We've also expressed that one person cannot answer every single phone call, it's not going to happen. That leads to us missing phone calls from commissioners, from PD, from people that are in a public safety threat at that time, as well as other adoptions. That sets the one phone person up for failure, and that ultimately led to her quitting. So now we have no phone people and no separate line. We have different hours. Yesterday alone, I think we probably had seven voicemails where we are just getting screamed and cussed at. So I think it's imperative that if we are going to be a successful department and do our due diligence, especially to the community, that we are set up for success, not failure.
I'll add to that, if you don't mind. This does not separate the animal control folks from the animal shelter. They still are one department, they'll still continue to work as one. They are in two locations, of course, now, but this will only bring them together, actually, because the phone person can connect the shelter calls as needed and the control calls. So that is just desperately needed to have a dispatcher for the animal control folks. And you were going to go on, I'm sorry, I'm going to get in front of you, go ahead.
We were also just going to mention for the shelter, we have inmates that come and do detail for us, so we get up to four inmates a day, sometimes we get them on the weekends. Because we don't have a sufficient vehicle at the shelter, we cannot pick them up and transport them, all we have are our personal vehicles. So animal control has to pick up and transport the inmates. They pick them up at 8:00 in the morning, bring them, drop them off at the shelter, then they take them back, they have to have them back by 4:00 o'clock. Sometimes they're late, just depending on what animal control has going on. So Courtney and myself cannot transport inmates, it all falls on Bailey, Jeff, and sometimes Tyler, just depending on what he has going on. So we were going to see if there was maybe a four or five passenger vehicle sitting around somewhere that we could use for the inmates at the shelter.
We can also use it, if I can interject.
Yeah.
For the out-of-town drives that you sometimes have to make in your own personal vehicle, which is, it's happening more often.
Well, and we're constantly doing supply runs, running to the commissioner's office, the post office, Walmart. I mean, we're just running back and forth all the time, and it's really not, doesn't make sense to load up the big county van to run to Walmart and buy supplies or run wherever we need to run and buy supplies. And a lot of times, I'll be honest with you, by the time we get off work, I'm not going to Walmart. So I do it on the weekends when I'm out and about, and so I'm driving my, you know, personal car here, there, and everywhere, picking up stuff for the shelter. Which leads to another issue that we are having, use of personal credit cards to buy supplies. I use my personal credit card weekly to buy everything, whether it be pet food, toilet paper, lunch for the inmates, I have to go grocery shopping for them. So we are desperate for departmental credit cards, desperate. I mean, I'm putting lots of money on my personal credit card, I have to turn it in for reimbursement, which is not that huge of an issue, but in the grand totality of things, it causes more work for Paulette, and then I have to get to the commissioner's office, find time to get there, pick up a check, get it to the bank. You know, it's just a lot of back and forth that we could eliminate if we had departmental credit cards. We do a lot of our stuff after hours, because we can't break away from the shelter, so that leaves us putting.
This weekend alone, for an emergency vet visit, it was expected for us to handle it. Emily put over $3,000 on her personal credit card to cover the cost of that, to then turn around and sit on a reimbursement.
And luckily, Emily has a great credit rating. Or you had, and you had a credit card, a lot of people don't have their own credit card for their own reasons, so why not too? But luckily you had that available, and you could take care of that emergency situation over the holiday weekend. So we just really ask that we look at the process of getting department, this, they're not the only department that needs it, the other departments need it as well. We're, I think we're sharing two, maybe three cards, I'm not sure, Shannon knows how many we have. And then it's compromised, and I'd like to know why it gets compromised so much. I'm not sure if our bank that we're using is not as solid as we, it needs to be in the security aspect of it, or if it's the housing, the house, the clearinghouse that the bank uses for the credit cards, I'm not sure. But it is constantly compromised, I mean, it's at least once a month that we get, we had to get a new credit card. So, anything else you want to add about that?
No.
Any questions that you guys might have for them?
Uh, yeah, we've got a couple. I do, I'll see what the other guys got. But, so the phone line, that's an easy fix, that's a phone call, should be, or can IT? We should have, getting a phone line in shouldn't be an issue.
Well, the phone lines are, your phones are actually transferable, you can plug those into any outlet and the phone will work.
Yeah, but we're talking about a phone line at the animal control trailer.
Yes.
All they have there are like three computers, a couple of desks, chairs, and a printer, they just got a printer.
Not too expensive.
So they're having to drive up to the shelter just to print stuff. And we were talking about animal control having a totally different phone line. So you don't call the shelter to get dispatched to animal control. If animal control had their own dispatcher and they filtered their own calls, then that alleviates the shelter staff, which is now me and Courtney, to do adoptions and whatnot.
So a hardline phone line, one hardline phone line will open up that communication factor.
Yes, absolutely, everything animal control related should come to a separate number for animal control.
And I agree, I believe, and things are working really well out there, you guys have really done a heck of a job. I think we all agree to that, that there's been a huge change.
And thanks to Jeff as well.
And Jeff made it in back here as well, he's back there.
I do.
We do appreciate that for sure. The phone line, I don't think is an issue, shouldn't be, that's a phone call, the chicken, the telephone, or I guess it's a spread.
Yeah, Jeff and I have been looking at some options from a staffing standpoint within our existing budget of how to make this all work, so there's a lot of other moving pieces.
Yeah, but, but, but what I'm saying, a hardline telephone line is part of it, and that's a phone call, let's get the phone in.
But you need to have somebody there that can answer it.
But with all due respect, we're answering it from the phone line, whether we're there or not, so having a separate phone line that I'm still expected to answer with me prior to having a dispatcher.
And it could be transferred to a phone that's mobile, so.
But, not to be disputed or argued about, but we need a phone line, what about the computers, what's the computer situation?
We're still needing two desktops.
Two, all right. And that would be an IT, that'd be through Curtis?
We just put in three new computers with dual monitors.
Single, single monitors.
Well, they're supposed to have brought you a dual monitor, so we can get that upgraded. I had not been into the building and got your new color printer in. It's working, okay. So, yeah, we'll work through these issues.
And the credit card.
Yeah, that was, that was the other thing I wanted to address as well. And I have been experienced the compromise as well, several of us have, it was incidentally, you know, it's not, but that is a recurring problem. And we've talked about that before, as the departments, as many people in departments as we have trying to share two or three cards, I think you could actually even have better accountability if you, better accountability and everything, if you had some more, so what, can we, let's look into, do you guys agree to?
We've had some conversations with Michael Lefebvre recently about that.
Okay, so we can, we can have some answers, probably, we can, next meeting we should have some answers on some of that, correct? All right.
Does anybody know if there's like extra vehicles around that we can use to transport the inmates? Because Bailey's going to mandate school, she'll be gone for almost three months, that leaves Jeff and Tyler. Tyler is here, there, and everywhere when the animal control calls. So that leaves it just to Jeff to get us our inmate detail labor every day.
That's possible, yeah.
So Courtney and I would like to be able to assist with that.
Okay.
Thank you guys, thank you.
So, one other question about credit cards, so Emily, do you buy most of your supplies at Walmart or bigger box stores or mom and pop stores or?
Um, so I have a membership to Sam's and Costco, and I have found that it is, we've been buying on Amazon, but when Amazon delivers, it sits at the post office until someone can get there, they will not deliver to the shelter. So it may be two or three days before I can get to the post office. A lot of times we have to send Tyler or whoever's in the area, can you remember, I've had friends go pick up stuff, just whoever's in the area. So I try to buy stuff at Sam's, it's a lot cheaper, and since I already have a membership, that's really not an issue. It's just that I'm constantly using my personal funds. But yes, Sam's is pretty much where we've been buying stuff, because it's cheaper. We shop around and try to find what, you know, the cheapest deal is.
Are you having to do anything as far as dog food right now, are you still getting some donations on?
We have been buying dog food, with the economy the way it is, it's kind of dried up, all the goods programs. But we were contacted by one of the goods programs that is putting us back into rotation. We just got 10 pallets last week, two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago.
Yeah. So we're working on that, but when those programs dry up, we have no option but to buy dog food.
Gotcha.
So, just kind of piggybacking off what you're, so, like I said, you do a lot of, like the Sam's or the Costco or some of that, which, of course, I always promote buying in the county when we can, but there's a lot of things that we have to go outside for. But I think what you're getting at, a membership to somewhere like that could be beneficial, but it wouldn't solve the problems of other expenditures. So it could be a partial, if we, I don't know if the county's got it.
The biggest thing that you've happened to go to Sam's for is dog food, right?
No, we've been buying our dog food from Chewy, and so that's a weekly order, but when they deny our charge, I got a call from Angela in finance saying that they had denied our Chewy charge, and so that delayed our FedEx delivery, so we were without dog food for three days, and that's a long time to go. So we're running to Walmart, buying dog food at $30 a bag. So it's just, we can't always save money when we're scrambling to find the supplies that we need last minute due to, you know, financial constraints. So we're just doing the best that we can with what we've got, we're all over the place buying stuff. We don't have like a single supplier. I have found that Amazon's a lot more expensive for stuff like trash bags, paper towels. So I've just been getting them at Sam's, because I have a personal membership there. And I know that budgets are tight, and so we try to penny pinch where we can and save money where we can, but, you know, when we're scrambling last minute, sometimes.
Can't scoop dog poop with your hands, you know what I mean? You gotta put it somewhere. Gotta, gotta, some things we gotta have.
So I was just asking, Ms. Hart, the co-op, and he'd said that they did sell dog food, have you checked price there?
We have bought from the co-op, their supply is limited on what they, the brands that they sell.
Okay.
We've been trying to keep everybody on a consistent diet, because it makes cleanup a lot easier. When you start switching foods around, and we're buying this from the co-op, and then we're buying this from Walmart, it causes a gigantic mess in the shelter, we've got sick dogs, it's hard on the staff.
That is part of the VCSG State Veterinary Guidelines to keep them on one food, which she follows in every route, so.
I do have a thought about that, we do have a new feed store called, I can't remember the name of it, it's right, it's on 27.
North in the town, yeah.
Yeah, it's by the, Red Place, that's it. We could check there and see if they could get us what you need in bulk, it's just an idea, they're in the county.
Yeah, I mean, we'll stay with the goods program as long as they have food, because we get it for very, very cheap, like seven cents on the pound or something. So we'll stay with that as long as they have food, but once that dries up, you know, we have to go back to buying food in bulk from somewhere. Which is about $600 to $700 a week.
So let me ask, Ms. Chairman, so if they could get some prices from those two feed stores, is that something we could set an account up with?
Oh, yeah.
With that, and that way you would not have to use credit card and?
Yeah, we do have an account with the co-op.
Okay.
We do have a net 30 with the co-op.
Okay, so maybe we can check the other place north in the town?
If you think that's plausible, that is just a thought that I had, I use them.
Yeah, that, I mean, another resource, you know?
Yeah.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move forward on our agenda. Okay, we do have an action item on the ordinance O-0623 had available the second public meeting today. The ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia regarding alcoholic beverage to provide for an effective date, to provide for survivability and other purposes, whereas the Board of Commissioners of the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia, whereas Walker County desires to amend its alcoholic beverage code to provide for licensing of retail packaged sales of distilled spirits in a crossroad community, therefore be ordained, ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County that Chapter 4 of the Code of Walker County, Georgia is amended as followed. Article 4, retail packaged sales of distilled spirits. Section 4-201 is amended by adding subsection E as follow. E, notwithstanding the provisions of section 4-201, C, distilled spirits by the package shall be allowed on a limited basis in a commercial neighborhood zone. C N, in accordance with the following. Number one, a retail establishment is located in a crossroad community is defined and identified in the 2022, 2032 Walker County Joint Comprehensive Plan. Two, granting the license shall be as a conditional use variance on a case-by-case basis. Number three, the front door of the retail establishment shall be located within 500 feet radius of the measured from the center line of the intersection of the road, which comprises of a crossroads of the crossroad community. Number four, each retail establishment in a crossroads community must comply with all other provisions of the Walker County Code of Ordinances and applicable law of the state of Georgia. Number two, this ordinance is effective immediately upon its adoption. Number three, if any section, cause, sentence, or phrase of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court or jurisdiction, then said holding shall in no way affect the validity in the remaining portions of this ordinance, passed and adopted the 28th day of December, 2023. We have a motion to approve this ordinance as presented.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of this ordinance?
So, yes, some discussion, and I respect everybody's opinion on this. In my opinion, and that's why we vote, I feel that they should be in the C1 zones as we voted on previously. But again, I understand we're voting on it, but that's just my opinion on it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, any other discussion of the board?
I just make a motion to approve it, because it's going to stretch over our comprehensive plan.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, so we have three ones. So motion does pass with a majority. Okay, if Resolution R-052-23, a resolution of the Walker County Board of Commissioners to set the annual compensation for the Walker County coroner, whereas the Georgia General Assembly enacted a local act, Georgia Law 1965, page 2710, that established the salary to be paid by the Walker County coroner, and whereas the local act has amended from time to time, and whereas the county is responsible for payment of the coroner's salary, whereas the county previously set the coroner's salary by Resolution R-046-20 at $28,146.30 or $2,345.53 per month, effective January 1, 2021. Whereas a request of the coroner, the county set the coroner's salary by Resolution R-054-21 at $30,146.40 or $2,512.20 per month, effective November 1, 2021. And whereas a request of the coroner, coroner set the coroner's salary by Resolution R-003-23 at $32,400 or $2,700 per month, effective January 1, 2023. Whereas the coroner has requested additional supplement to compensation, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, that the county coroner's position shall be set at an annualized salary of $34,400 or $2,866.67 per month for services rendered, effective January 1, 2024, so resolved and adopted the 28th day of December, 2023. We have a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any discussion of the board?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the salary has been set. Okay, we have quite a few resolutions tonight for board appointments and reappointments, and I don't want to bore everybody, because a lot of these next four or five is going to be super, super repetitive. But this resolution is R-53-23 for the appointment, for a reappointment of Chip Catlett for a term beginning January 1, 2024 and ending on December 31st, 2026, to the Northwest Georgia Joint Development Authority. So if it's okay with y'all, I won't read all the ins and outs of that. Do we have a motion to approve this reappointment of Chip Catlett?
Yes, sir, so move.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved.
Chairman, on this next one, I'm going to sit in the audience and recuse myself.
Okay, that'd be fine. Commissioner Stoltz is going to recuse himself on this next one, since this one pertains his reappointment. But Robert Stoltz is to be reappointed to the Board of Health beginning January 1 of '24 and ending on December 31st of 2029. This is a reappointment. Do we have a motion to approve this Resolution R-54-23 for his reappointment to the Board of Health?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew, any further discussion of the board?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is approved. Okay, this one is a reappointment of Francis Cobb, Randy Pittman, and Eddie Upshaw for the Historic Preservation Commission. This group's done an outstanding job, and these terms are, to reappoint them from January 1, 2024 and ending on December 31st, 2026. And this also further resolves that John Culpepper will continue to serve as the chairman for the year 2024, and this is Resolution R-05523. Do we have a motion to approve these reappointments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Askew, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion?
Just want to say they've done a wonderful job, Randy, you and your team have just done a great job, thank you.
It's a great group. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is approved for these reappointments. All right, the next one are also reappointments to our Alcoholic Beverage Commission, and they have been quite busy over the last several months. So this is a reappointment of Chad Bomar and also Harold Hughes for terms beginning January 1 of '24 through December 31st of '26. This also further resolves the continuing of Harold Hughes to be appointed to continue to serve as the chair for calendar year '24. We have a motion to approve Resolution R-56-23.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Blake Moore, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved. Next one we have is Resolution R-5723. This is an open position that we have for a term on the Walker County Planning Commission. This is a recommendation by Commissioner Hart of William Ingram for a term beginning January 1, 2024 and ending on December 31st of 2026. Also further resolves that Michael Haney will be continuing as the chair for this commission through 2024 as well. So we have a motion to approve Resolution R-57-23.
So move.
We have a, if it's a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution's approved. Okay, the next we have is Resolution R-5823. These are for reappointments also for our Board of Assessors. Buddy Chapman and Steve Ledbetter, both for terms of January 1, 2024, ending on December 31st, 2028. Also, Commissioner Hart's had discussions with Buddy Chapman recently, and he's ready to step down as the chairperson, and his recommendation, and I agree, is to... Okay, now I've made a mistake there, didn't I? Yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, Buddy Chapman's term is January 1, 2024. Yeah, Buddy Chapman's term is January one, two thousand twenty-four, ending on December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, and Steve Ledbetter's will be January one of twenty-four to December thirty-first of twenty-eight, so that gets our cycles staggered where we would then going forward have one person each year. Thank you for that. So, further resolved that the appointment to serve as chair, based off of their recommendations, would, would be Karen Deck. She's agreed to serve, and she's been on this board, and she's done a great job, and Buddy Chapman would be excited for her to take over the chair position. So, do we have a motion to approve this resolution?
Yes, motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this resolution is approved. Okay, thank you. All right, we have a, a couple of memorandums of understanding here from G dot, and they are in the works of replacing a couple of county road bridges in our community. CR two nineteen, which is Red Belt Road at West Chickamauga Creek, that's there at the Griss Mill in Chickamauga, right outside the city limits. And then also CR four thirty-four at Lee Clarkson Road, West Chickamauga, that's right there as you're approaching, say, the Gordon Lee Farm area. Those bridge replacements are, I think, something north of a couple of million dollars apiece, and so they're asking us to offset some of the costs that they're going to have in obtaining additional right-of-way for those bridges. And so, since they're funding the project as the replacement of the bridge, they are requesting that the county take on the responsibility of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of those right-of-ways and additional work that they have to do pertaining to that. And so, both of these, we actually have two separate memorandums of understanding, but they both are the same, one's for the Red Belt Road and one's for the Lee Clarkson Road, and we can pay this out of our T-splosh funding when that would come up. These bridges are probably still a year or so out from being let for, forbid. They just want to make sure that the county's willing to support the seventy-five thousand dollars, and we just needed to be able to record this in the record.
So, both projects, what the money is to buy right-of-way, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes. So, it'd be seventy-five thousand dollars each.
So, a hundred and fifty-five.
And we can pay out of our T-splosh funds.
And that is a cap. In other words, if it goes over that seventy-five, they're going, that's all we're committing to.
That's right. And that, you know, that's about four million dollars plus worth of bridges for my grant when our participations are a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right, right. For the return on investment.
Yeah, very good. So, do we have a, a motion to approve both of these memorandums of understanding between the Georgia Department of Transportation for the bridges at Red Belt Road and also Lee Clarkson?
Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion?
I would recommend under section four, where it says miscellaneous regarding any notices that are to be sent, that we need to fill in the appropriate contact information for Walker County.
Right there.
I'm both of those.
Very good. Yeah, so we'll put the county contact information, they've got their G dot information. Very good. All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving both of these, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Quite a bit of signatures on this. Okay, the next one we have is our, is our annual local marketing organizational agreement, this agreement's between Walker County and the Walker County Chamber of Commerce. We have to use a nonprofit five oh one C organization to expend the hotel motel excess, excise funds pursuant to OCGA section forty-eight thirteen dash fifty-one. The Chamber's been doing this ever since we started with our hotel motel tax. We've got a very good committee that does meet every month, and this is to, to renew that agreement with the Chamber of Commerce, so we have that in our minutes and records for audit purposes. So, we have a motion to approve the renewal of this agreement. Motion approved by Commissioner Stoltz. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Next we have is a purchase order twenty-four dash five seventy-six, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty, eighty dollars and twenty-five cents for the Motorola for fifteen radios for the sheriff's office funded out of our splosh. Going to ask Chief Hodge to come up. He's been coordinating all of the relations with Motorola of all of our radio upgrades with our splosh funds, so I'll let him speak to this and get y'all on that today.
Good Eagle. Thank you. Let's see, gee. So, this is two separate purchase orders, but one the same as far as the splosh funding that was allocated. So, the request tonight is for, for the sheriff's department, seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars, twenty-five cents, is for ten mobile radios, which are the units that go in the vehicles, and five portable radios for the handheld units. And then for the fire departments, fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents is a total of ten radios, five of the mobile units, in-vehicle units, and five of the portable handheld. So, to give you a little historical review, there was a million dollars set aside for the current splosh cycle. We initially purchased, and we use round numbers, four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars in December of two thousand twenty. That was the initial overall major replacement of the portable radios that we did that year. There was another purchase of forty-five thousand in October of twenty-one from mobile radios in October of twenty-two, sixty-eight thousand, and then, of course, this request totaling one hundred and thirty-nine, three twenty. So, we have, we have spent round number seven hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of the one million so far, leaving us at round number two hundred and fifty-three thousand. So, we're doing good as far as what our, our plan was with replacing the radios. So, these are, these are going, these are going in new vehicles that have been purchased, both the sheriff's department, fire department, and then also replacing some, some units and keeping a couple in reserve.
We getting those pretty much quickly.
Do we buy them?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, these are, these are within a couple, usually within two, three weeks.
So, what is the lifespan of one of those radios? Like, not, I know the handhelds can vary, but not in the vehicles?
The, they actually last a, a long time. The, the reason we made that purchase in two thousand twenty is because the, they were no longer servicing the radios that we had. The radios, I mean, those radios are, a lot of those radios are still in service, and we have a cash and emergency management. We use some of them as far as that goes, but, so.
So, who, who does your maintenance on your radios? There used to be one in Dalton.
Chattanooga.
Motorola dealership?
Yeah, we have a regional type.
It's the city of Chattanooga.
City of Chattanooga.
We have a contractor, city of Chattanooga.
Yeah, so, so when the radio system was, the eight hundred, may hundred system was put in years ago, there was a regional agreement that.
I understand that, but I'm saying like if you have a maintenance issue with your Motorola radio, is there?
We, we pay, we have a contract with Chattanooga.
They have a staff and have a department that does that on a regional basis for all the ones where they get the system.
If we have a, we have a reprogramming issue or anything like that, they're, they're the ones that take care of flashing the radios or.
They push out the updates.
They'll come, they'll come to Walker County, or we'll take it to them.
Okay.
So, that's been in place for?
Long time.
Couple of decades, probably.
Yeah.
And they do a good job for us. Any other questions? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve purchase order two thousand twenty-four dash five seventy-six, in the amount of seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents for radios?
Yes, sir.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this purchase order here is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, gee.
Okay, and he spoke to the second one, because this one just divides out. The first one goes, goes for sheriff's vehicles, this one goes for the fire rescue. So, this is purchase order two thousand twenty-four dash five seventy-seven, in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents for, for portables as well. So, we have a motion to approve this purchase order.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Blake Moore. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the purchase order is approved. Okay, all right, yeah, thank you. All right, next we have is a purchase order two thousand twenty-four six oh six. This is for purchases of some vehicles with Jeep Chrysler Dodge. Do we have anyone here to speak to this? Yes, sir, come on up and state your name.
I'm Charlie Barrett. I'm the patrol lieutenant, Walker Sheriff's Office. Chris Anderson usually does this, he's sick right now, but on average, our deputies in a year, they almost reach a million miles on patrol vehicles. So, obviously, a lot of tire wear starts occurring, and it gets expensive to maintain them, and eventually we deadline them. So, every, about every year, we try to purchase what we can. Durango is right now from Jenkins here in Lafayette. They're actually the cheapest vehicle available, the chargers are no longer being made, so we went with those, and I believe they're also going to get a pickup truck for the detective division, too, because the vehicle that detective's in is, is ancient, the transmissions went out three times, we replaced it from older vehicles.
Did he, did he happen to mention what the timeline was of being able to get these in? Did he have any idea?
Uh, I, he did not, but I know in the past, we just purchased some Durangos, I think, last year, and there was a hiccup at the assembly lines with the late on, but we get them usually pretty quickly, within about three months, I believe, three to four months. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so this is also allocation of their splosh dollars, and so the sheriff manages this very well every year, and they'll buy seven to ten vehicles a year, depending on what the cost outlay is and what their needs are. So, it's also kind of their annual request for replacement vehicle. So, this purchase order is for three hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars, and this is for seven of the Durangos. Like I said, I think there was one truck.
One truck.
Yeah, one Ram truck on here for a total of three forty-one seventy. Any other questions tonight on this?
So, lieutenant, the Durango's there for road patrol?
Yes, sir. For them, we go to patrol, for you, we go to court services division, but they do the lawn transport, because they need them, because they put a lot of miles on vehicles, but pretty much, yes, sir.
No more room in the back seat?
It's, it's a little more room here, a little more countrywide, I reckon, yes, sir.
Yeah, there, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Will y'all be taking vehicles out of service when you get these items sent?
Typically, what we do is the older ones, we'll make with spare, so when one goes down, if there's an issue, whatever, we have new hires, we don't put them in brand-new vehicles, trying to be, you know, careful with that. But we'll keep vehicles, we got two thousand and sixteen chargers still that we use, they're just so high mileage, and they tear up, we just put a drive trash, and one of them is about a thousand dollars.
But we need a good one for the animal shelter. You were hearing about.
Yeah, I was actually listening to that. I, I think we may actually have a CID truck.
What you do about giving us a donation for that one?
I'll talk to somebody else. See what I can do.
Pretty fair trade, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thanks, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for coming.
Appreciate you.
For being here. All right, uh, do we have a motion to approve purchase order two thousand twenty-four dash six oh six?
Yes, sir.
A motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. Okay, the next we have is for some equipment for the road department. Carlin, do you want to speak on this? Or you'll need to, as the road widener?
Shoulder machine?
Yeah, shoulder, yeah.
First piece is a road widening machine. Y'all know we're doing a lot of paving. Some of the techniques that we're using, we're, instead of, we're adding some binder and topping, and it's raising the shoulders up pretty good bit, and we need to build our shoulders up to match the top of the asphalt. I, I don't know if y'all, you guys have any?
Yeah, it's in the pavement.
Oh, okay. So, this will go on in front of a skid steer. We can run sifted dirt through it, millings. I'm hoping that I can use chirp. I feel like that I can make it work one way or another. The issues that I'm hearing about using chirp is in front of people's houses, one of the first things they complain about is rocks and not growing grass and things like that, but I don't believe material's going to be a problem. This will allow us to try to get some of these shoulders built up, and to contract this, it's eighteen to twenty thousand dollars a mile. So, it hopefully will save us, save us quite a bit. Works similar to a paver, you get a load of dirt, you back up to it, it's got a conveyor, shoots it over to the side, we don't, we don't have to dump a bunch of material on the road, or scratching it up with buckets and stuff, and then we run a broom behind it. There is, we're going to attempt to try to roll this down to compact it with what we have. I've asked a few people that have used these machines, that can get a little dangerous for tipping the rollers over. This company sells, they do sell a offset roller that goes on the front of a skid steer, where it's kind of on an arm, sits over to the side, everything's on the asphalt, so I'll have to, still doing a little digging on that, but this will at least get us started.
And like I said, you'd be able to, not even, not just necessarily the roads that were paving, but a lot of our existing areas where.
Yes.
Where it's dropped down, people drop off, and so that'll, that'll be.
They tell me I can run asphalt through it, we can run millings, nothing, and don't run anything in it larger than, you know, six, ten inch, six, eight inch stone. Just wanted to keep it below, it below all of that.
Good thing, too, running, being able to run millings, is we do our asphalt operations, we're doing some of this stuff where you're doing millings, we got a place, we got a place to stockpile them and use them now.
We, we do, um, a lot of our millings and some of the, when they get a lot of dirt in them, I do have the option to try to keep those, but they do recycle a lot of them, and that, them keeping a lot of our milling reflects on our prices a little bit, so it's, it's kind of, kind of one of those things. Say where we're at with stuff on cloud, when the time comes.
Any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve purchase order two thousand twenty-four dash six ninety-eight?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Askew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. Okay, the next we have is purchase order two thousand twenty-four seven oh one. This is for capital purchase of three Ford dump trucks from Lee Smith. These are F seven fifty trucks. This is very, very much the same truck, the one that we bought last from Lee Smith, and this also has the package on it of the dump bed. These are thirty-three thousand capacity trucks. These trucks, the chassis are here, they've got these at their body shop now, having the dump bodies installed, probably four to six weeks out of actually receiving these. Several of our single axle dump trucks are very, very well-used up, and so this is some trucks that are available for pretty much immediate shipment, and this is also, would come out of our splosh funding. Anything additional to add to that?
So, how many of these smaller dump trucks do you currently have in the fleet?
All total, there are twelve.
Twelve.
There is currently, I think I've got two that are, that I can send out, this one of the new seven fifties that we already have. The other smaller seven fifty is a, a lower-profile flat truck, and we do a lot of pulling with it, we just pretty much keep our excavator on that truck. The other older international trucks, they're hit or miss. We might get a week or two out of them. There's one that's got a, that had been wrecked, it, it's got a bent frame, it's, we'd keep it around for parts. The other ones, they've, roughly twenty, probably twenty-five, thirty years old now, I guess. We're just at that point.
Yeah, well, that's mine, but my, I bring that up, is you get three brand-new ones, and you got twelve old ones. Would we then start looking to get rid of the older, older ones?
We would have to. There's three that I'm pretty certain we, we probably won't ever get them back running.
Well, several of these, parts off of them, scrap them down because. Well, several of these, parts off of them, scrap them down, because these trucks are to the age that getting parts for them is very challenging. So we can keep several trucks going by using those parts, and they do that a lot with some of the police cars and all, we was talking about earlier.
First day, yeah.
My only concerns with these really is making the snowplow stuff work. I had a conversation with Andy over at Lee Smith, I'm assuming all this information on the trucks went straight to your office, so I, he, we're trying to find some mounts for these trucks to where our plows will go on to them, off of international. That was an issue on the last two, we got one of them to work somewhat, one of them was a wiring harness issue, I don't know, for whatever reason, that particular seven fifty would not match up to any of the wiring harnesses for the snowplows we have. But the other one, he's kind of made work. So, they're trying to find that stuff, I, I don't know where he's at with it. It's come about Thursday, I believe it was Thursday, when, last Thursday, whenever we had that discussion, and kind of was going through the motions on all that, and pretty much told him that's, that's one of my biggest issues with Ford's, trying to replace internationals, we can, a whole new setup is roughly fifteen, twenty thousand dollars per plow. So that's, kind of, our plows are in good shape, that's why I'm going to try to keep those and
And that's just plow, is that just the plow itself, or is that the plow and the box?
I'm pretty certain that's just the plow, the mount, the boxes.
Just the plow itself would probably be ten, fifteen at least, just, I mean, just guessing, and then the box.
Box would be extra.
Would be different, would be extra as well, so we had a conversation today about the boxes on some of these things, those old gas motors on the back of those.
Well, we converted a lot of those, or we converted them all over to propane, and that worked for a little bit, but
Well, I mean, it's totally independent.
Yeah.
Gas motor, versus running off a hydraulic, or a PTL motor.
Yeah, the best way would be to run them off hydraulic, PTL, and then you don't have to worry about that. We, we've been out there several nights, and at twenty degrees, trying to get them things running beside a nigger jack.
And we can go out and we can prepare these things two weeks ahead of any event, park them all in a shop, and the day we get called in, none of them will start.
True statement.
Yeah, it's one of those things with the boxes all the time. But the plows, I'm a little concerned with, I don't know that they're going to be able to find mounts for them, for us to use our current plows.
We may have to build mounts.
I, I talked to Rick, Carlin, way down here, and he said that his concern wasn't fitting the truck, that, that could be fabricated, their concern was the wiring harness, but surely we can figure something out.
I would think so, I mean, you know, it just can't be that complicated of a harness, I mean, people redo all types of equipment, that's, so I don't know what to do. That was, that would be my question.
Pretty simple controls.
That's what I said, it's just lights and up and down.
They have to plug into the ECM of the truck. Did Rick go through both of those issues?
Yeah, but he said that he had talked to them about a year ago, and they sent the wrong plug or something, but they didn't know if they had that exact one, but he hadn't followed up with them, and that was a year ago, so.
Well, maybe, maybe that has come about, but I know it was definitely a huge ordeal.
So, we buy three new trucks, and then next month, you gotta buy three new snowplows, that's not going to be good.
That's not, that's not a good deal.
No, do we need to confirm that, or do we have to get these bought?
I, I mean, I mean, it's not just the snowplows, yes, we need snowplows. But we got to have running trucks to function the county, to ditch the ditches, I don't care how much we pay, if we're not ditching enough, keeping and clipping shoulders, we're wasting money.
I agree, I agree.
So if we don't have trucks that Bobby can send these guys out and do their job, we're backing up all the way around. And we need to buy these three, and we need to be looking at three more, because I talked to Bobby on the way down here, and the older trucks were there when I was there, and they were hundred fifty, sixty thousand miles then, and I ain't been down there in over eight years, and they're twenty-two years old, and that's the newer ones, other than the two fourths we bought, we've got to get on a cycle, once you start working on them, it's just downhill from there.
These being available, you know, finding trucks.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Blakenmore, any further discussion with the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, purchase orders approved.
Get those snowplows. If there's any issues, let me just bring, come right back down, and we'll, we'll get that straightened out, because that, we, we need that, that information, we really, I'd like to have that information before we, I'm like you, Brian, but, but we, but Robert made a great point, we're running out of trucks, so we get some that we can get accessible now, and then stay on the hunt, because like he just said, we need to be looking.
We've got this, do, is it? Do you guys want me to start going into single axle trucks, or do I need to start looking for tandems? We've got two tandems, one's about to have, I don't know what automatic transmissions for those things cost, I'm assuming about eight, eight grand.
Well, you had three tandems, yeah.
We did, one of them's got a transmission laying in the floor, yeah.
Well, I think you need a little bit of both.
Which one is it, it's transmitting?
One of the Kenworths.
Is it one of the newer ones or all?
I think all three of them are about the same.
There is two newer, I drove one of the newer ones, two forty-eight, I think, it's two forty-seven, two forty-eight.
I believe it, it might be one of the newer ones, I think it is.
It would probably be worth fixing it, it would be over ten thousand.
I'm sorry?
I said it was probably worth fixing it.
Well, we're, we're, we're in the process of going ahead and ordering one, but still, there's three tandems there.
So if you
Do I need to be looking for single axles, or how much money you want me to spend? I guess that's a better question.
I mean, you, you, you probably can use both at different times, I mean,
Oh, yeah.
You're going to need to keep three, at least three tandems around.
I mean, you really have to have tandems, because when you dig out a road and put it in wrong, you, I mean, you're talking six, eight trips on a single axle to get the rock to a ditch. Or you can make two or three trips on a tandem.
And then, and then, of course, like I said, the, the majority, probably the majority of the county roads are pretty, are narrow, smaller roads, and we do need those smaller, the, the single axles when we're ditching and just
Single axles are the workhorse.
Yeah, that's right, that's, that's, yeah, so my answer, Carlin, would be, first of all, don't spend no more than you have to. But no, I think you need to be looking probably at both, I mean, just if you're actively looking, because we know the market's kind of funny out there, and so I, I would, you know, my answer would be, I think I'd be looking, just kind of keeping my eye peeled, you've got the contacts, you know what you're looking for, keep on, kind of keep it moving, and like Robert said, I mean, we're going to have to start, because I, I was working at the county when they bought those new single axles, like I said, and they are twenty, twenty-two years old, and that's a lot of service, and we're going to have to start replacing more often, so.
Yeah, and we just got lucky, they had these installed, because most dump trucks, it's going to take you eight, twelve months to get them.
Well, I have run across a person in Atlanta that is, I, I think, I'll know more next week, but I think I'm going to have some luck there.
It'd be awesome.
I'll know something in a, probably by the end of next week, she's going to let me know what she's found. I'm fairly certain there's a few out there that are sitting on a lot.
Well, while you're up, we're going to talk about our next purchase order, two thousand twenty-four seven oh three, for our rock slide that we had on Dodberry Gap back on Thanksgiving Day, so we've got a proposal from our contract, it's done a good job for us on our other rock slides, GSI proposal for the emergency rock fall mitigation on Dodberry Gap Road, in the amount of a hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, and I know you've been firsthand involved in this.
So, the scope of work for this is, they'll, they'll provide us a PE design. It will, the construction is to include trimming, scaling, auto stem rock breaking, and pressure grouted rock bolting. So, the, the trimming and scaling will be all of the loose material, it'll step it off, get all of that out. The auto stem rock breaking, it's a term that I'm not too familiar with, but I believe that's blasting. And I think that they're going to, they'll, they'll do some light blasting to get some of the bigger stuff out and break away. And then the pressure grouted rock bolting is similar to sole nailing, but it's, they call it bolting when they're going into rock. Sole nailing, they'll drill into the hit rock, then nail it all down with pressure grouted rods and bolts and wire and stuff like that. They'll be drilling into the rock and then bolting, bolting it down. It'd be an interesting process, so.
So after our engineer come up with GSI and looked at this, he felt confident that we could open it up at that time to one lane, we put some, some barriers up, which we did, so, and they stayed here on their proposal, that they can get on this pretty quick, looking at about nine days' worth of work, it felt like they could mobilize within about three or four weeks, once we get this approved and back to them. So I was very impressed that they could move that quickly, to get up here and get this knocked out, and, you know, in the next few weeks.
I did let them know that we would be closing the road for them to work, so just, anybody that comes along, I
Yeah, it's a good point, so we'll have to put back out when they're here, to close the road when they're working, so we don't cause any issues.
Just, just real quick, Carlin, is that, so that, this is, that's all-inclusive, on what, did this?
Yes, it's a hundred and thirty-six, one eighty.
And, and, I know that there's always, just by being in the business, I know there's things that can be unforeseen, do we have any feel that this, is this a lockdown? I mean, they're going, or they're going, is there a possibility of a change order coming in if they run into something?
There are, the pricing, there, there's some.
I know there's a couple of, yeah. This is the third project they would have done for us, the first two projects, there wasn't any overall cost runs at all, and they were probably more uncertainty with those.
And they actually come in a little cheaper.
That last one, they did bill us a little bit less than quoted, so.
They're, they're pretty good at giving this, if there is any, it's not much. And when I say if there's any, I'm, I'm just picturing something else happening either up or down from where they're actually working, so I believe this ought to cover it.
Good.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Any other questions, ladies?
No, sir.
Okay, so we have purchase order two thousand twenty-four dash seven oh three to Geo Stabilization International LLC, or known as GSI, for a hundred thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars, do we have a motion to approve this purchase order?
Motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Stoltz, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion is approved. Thank you, Carlin.
Chairman, appreciate it.
Thanks, Carlin.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, under unfinished business, John Stanley requested rezone from R one residential to R two residential for property located at zero Pine Valley Drive, Rossford, Georgia, three oh seven four one, tax map and parcel number zero dash one thirty-seven dash zero twenty-seven A. This item was tabled at our March two thousand twenty-three meeting, and also the December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to substitute a conditional use variance for, for the rezoning application. And the conditional use variance will be for low intensity agricultural, for the use of property for hobbies, educational experiences such as backyard chickens, cows, pigs, for four H. The zoning of the property shall remain R one.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Blakenmore to leave the property at, at R one, that this would be a conditional use variance, so the property owner is able to, to do what they were, after to do, and this has been agreeable with them. Anything else from our planning director on this, do you have anything else to add on this one? If you would, come up here, please. Sorry about that, put you on the spot.
So Mr. Stanley cannot be here tonight, he's on vacation during the holidays, so he did email just confirmation that he wanted to move forward with this, and that he liked the alternative use that was presented to him, so he feels like that's a better fit than what was previously desired, so.
Okay, yeah, so this is the email dated December twenty-first, thank you so much for helping on this, we would be very happy if the commission would drop our rezone request and amend the variance request to allow for limited agriculture on the property at the listed above address.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
All right, and that's your motion, so do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hart, any further discussion with the board? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that request is granted for that variance. The next one we have is SAI for request for rezone from C in commercial neighborhood to C one commercial property located at ninety-one eighty West Highway one thirty-six, Chickamauga, Georgia, three oh seven oh seven, tax map and parcel number zero dash two five six dash oh twenty-seven. This was tabled on October twenty-sixth, November the ninth, and December the fourteenth of all of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Askew.
Yes, sir, I would, at this time, I would like to make a motion to substitute a conditional use variance for the rezoning application. That conditional use variance shall be to permit the sale of distilled spirits by the package in the commercial neighborhood zone in accordance with the provisions of Article Four, subsection E, which is approved by the Board of Commissioners earlier in this meeting, the one that we've just done. And so, and the property here would also, the zoning on the property shall remain the same, it would be a commercial neighborhood its way.
Okay, my understanding, the applicant is, is happy with this as well?
Yes.
Your presence, so he's good with that, and that would keep that still as a C in neighborhood, but also enact the ordinance for the
Keep us in compliance with our, our comprehensive plan as well, on the five hundred square, five hundred foot radius.
And that would allow for our cross-ruin community designation.
Stay in compliance with that, yes, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, by Commissioner Stoltz, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Okay, that was all of our old unfinished business, and this time on our agenda is our commissioner comment, Commissioner Blakenmore.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and getting involved, appreciate all of our employees, they all work very hard. It does get cold in the weather, just appreciate all that, yeah.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Askew.
You know, here, here we are at the end of the year, I do hope everybody had a Merry Christmas, and spent good time with your family. It's time to reflect on this past year, and we've had a good year here in Walker County, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things happening. We're starting a new year coming up, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year, because I won't see you till afterwards. Please be, be careful, be responsible, and let's, let's work together as a team to continue to make Walker County what it is today, and it's a beautiful place, it's why everybody's wanting to be here, it's why we want to keep it this way. Since we've got a great team, a lot of folks, a lot of hard work from our citizens, our employees, some four hundred and how many plus employees?
Four twenty-something.
Something, so we can't, but, but thank you all, we appreciate what you do.
Very good, Commissioner Hart?
Yes, I'd like to thank the people that serve our boards, we appointed several people tonight to the Board of Health, Historic Preservation, Alcohol Board, Planning Commission, Board of Assessors, so a lot of those folks, some of y'all are here tonight, Will Linkham's here, I think Randy's here. So, thank you all for stepping up and doing that, because it doesn't pay real good, I'll just but, but especially to Will, because Will, Will's granddad served on a board with my dad many years ago, and I approached Will about doing this, and it's great to see young people stepping up in the community and, and doing your part, so thank you, Will, and thank you too, Randy, for being here. Robert?
Yes, sir, thank you. So appreciate everyone coming out tonight, I want to thank our employees for their dedication, their hard work throughout twenty twenty-three, do a wonderful job, and we have a holiday coming up, and a lot of our county employees will be working the holidays. Public safety, Sheriff's Department, Fire EMS, Road Department, maybe, so, maybe not, maybe not. But just, you know, if you see these guys out and about, tell them thank you for their service, and appreciate them keeping us all safe and, and watching over us. I want to thank you guys for your vote of confidence on the Board of Health, I have certainly enjoyed serving on that board, look forward to continuing to serve on it. And just wish everyone a very happy and safe New Years, thank you all.
Very good. Very good comments tonight, also, I'd like to add to, kind of echoing what Commissioner Hart mentioned, we do have a lot of good people serving on these different boards and commissions, and as we were going through some of this year-end task of getting these reappointments, it was a, it was a pleasure to be able to, to look at the names and know they've all been engaged and participating and willing to serve, and it really made it really easy to reappoint many of these members, because they all have done a great job and, and take their roles very seriously, so I appreciate all those that serve in these different capacities. Also, too, this was a little bit of an unusual night that we had Also, too, this was a little bit of an unusual night, that we had a lot of purchase orders, but you know, it also is refreshing that, you know, we had purchase orders here, and also these memorandums of understanding with the, with the state DOT. I think that put us a little over about a million dollars' worth of investment into bridges, equipment, vehicles, different things. But it's very refreshing, also, we didn't take on any debt to do any of that. All that is done with available funds, and a lot of that is contributed to the citizens being supportive of T-Splotch and being supportive of Splotch, that takes the pressure off